... or more at a distance must receive a special approval by the local curriculum committee with an eye towards two things, one of them being the rigor of that course being comparable to a face-to-face course, and the other one that in lieu of the opportunities for face-to-face contact, that there is a mechanism in place for regular effective student contact or contact between instructor and student.
And if I can, well, may I kind of go ahead, Dean Flanagan?
I just wanted to add too, we do do faculty evaluations on online classes with the same rigor that we do with our face-to-face classes.
Okay, but I'm assuming that we're also competing in a market where there are many other courses that are being offered online, many of which don't have to go through the same level of academic review, if you will, that our courses do. True?
If they are California Community Colleges courses, those are subject to the same Title V restrictions. If it's outside of that system, then I don't know.
Trustee Melchiker.
I just wanted to mention, because I did take the real estate class, the thing that was really good about it is that it was very interactive. There was someone speaking on the computer and you could take pop quizzes anytime you want, and then when you took the exams, you took them on computers, but they were timed. So you had to start them and stop them within a certain time. So they were very rigorous. And also, I wanted to mention, you know, if you just, you could just buy a little iPod Nano for 50 bucks, and I think students can afford that and download podcasts to it and listen to it in the gym or in the car or when you're cooking or whatever you're doing. And certainly, it's a way to be learning all the time and to be using your time very valuably and very inexpensively.
Thank you all for a fine presentation. Chancellor Mather.
Thank you. And one concluding comment, we want to thank the board and the chancellor for your support. You'd seen the graph of our growth. Earlier this year, we had reached a point where our own success was beginning to harm us. We were just full up with all of our systems, and thanks to you approving it, we've been able to prepare for the future by increasing the bandwidth, increasing the storage, almost doubling the number of student licenses, adding servers. So we're well-prepared for future growth. Thank you for that.
I'd just like to make a couple of points. One, as it was noted, while campus-based education is not increasing in enrollment nationwide, including here, as some graphical representation showed, that the distance education, or more specifically, online education is really growing nationally at the rate of about 10% a year. And certainly, about 15% of our FTEs, Full-Time Security Union Students, are served by online education. I want to thank all the faculty, staff, administrators of both the colleges, as well as the staff of the district IT for leading this effort in serving students through online education. And thank you all for your excellent presentation this evening.
All right, I mentioned earlier that we were going to advance a couple of items, but before we get to those items, I want to advance a different item because I see lawyers sitting in the audience. And they're here for 6.3. So let's get 6.3 out of the way and excuse our esteemed counsel. It's an agreement, it's here for approval, an agreement with HCTD.
Move approval.
Discussion? Well, Andy, seeing no discussion, we may just breeze right through this unless there's something you need to say to us that you haven't already.
I have, unless there are some questions that I can answer?
There seem to be no questions from my colleagues. Let's vote on the item. Trustee J, please. And the matter carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. We are now going to advance item 6.1, which is the IVC Associated Students Tentative Budget.
Call upon Glenn, President Rockmore.
Are they here? There they are. All right. President Rockmore.
If I can, I would like to just introduce our student speakers for you. First is Denise Mitchell Batista. She's currently a sophomore at Irvine Valley College and aspires to transfer to the University of California, Los Angeles, majoring in Communication Studies. She's also the ASIVC president, and she hopes to make a difference in the lives of students and faculty by representing them and speaking out for them in student government matters. The second student speaker is Ronald Smothers. He spent four years on active duty in the United States Marine Corps, completing two combat tours in Iraq. Ronald is now at Irvine Valley College studying political science, social science, and history. He would like to transfer to San Diego State University to obtain a degree in international security and conflict resolution, and then work for the State Department as a foreign affairs specialist. And also, we have, supporting them, our Director of Student Affairs, Helen Locke.
Thank you very much for that introduction, Dr. Rockmore. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Denise Batista, our president.
As President Rockmore stated, the incoming vice president will be assisting me today, Mr. Ronald Smothers, and he will be alternating with me throughout the course of the presidency.
We are having trouble hearing, so if you can either speak up or speak more directly into the microphone, but sound levels are a real problem today.
Can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me?
There we go.
Okay. I would like to take a few seconds to acknowledge the students and staff of IVC who are here to support ASIVC in the budget presentation. We do have in attendance tonight the former ASIVC president, Ashley Nguyen, the former ASIVC treasurer, Paul Wu, and Gary Dater, our project specialists. I want to thank you all for coming.
Good evening, President Wagner, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Mather, President Rockmore, President Burnett, and leaders of the governance groups. It is a great opportunity to make this presentation of the ASIVC budget to you today. We would like to present the budget and will open the floor to questions at the end. You will notice that in our presentation, we are using a new template. This was provided to us by the district accounting office. Thank you. I will start with the first page about the process ASIVC uses to arrive at our allocations to the community college. As you can see from the first slide, it is an outline of our format. I will explain how the students applied this process. In the spring of 2009, requests for funds were distributed across the IVC campus for anyone to submit their programs for ASIVC funding. After ASIVC elections, the Budget and Finance Committee, which I will later call BFC, convened to review the campus community funding requests and to start the allocation process. The BFC identified our sources of income, looked at past history requests for two years, and current requests in order to make good decisions of our allocations. The BFC members reviewed all requests, evaluated how each would serve IVC students and programs, and allocated based on ASIVC's desire to support faculty and staff who support the students by donating their time to give students a complete college experience. The next page describes our sources of income. Our beginning fund balance is $53,500, which are unused portions of all line item account income from 2008 to 2009, and unanticipated income from the bookstore and cafeteria. These funds will not be added to the 2009 to 2010 budget for allocations, but will be available for a one-time mid-year request consideration. Following that, we have our minimum guaranteed revenue, which is comprised from our bookstore commissions of $355,000, which are commissions from textbook sales, logo items, supplies, and other items found in the bookstore, and also from the cafeteria vending of $25,000, which are commissions from food, catering, the coffee cart, and snack food vending sales by the cafeteria. The assessment is the utilities and part-time office assistant, which are overhead costs to the college. The funds are withheld from revenue since it is not an expense. Those assessments are $14,500 for utilities and $35,000 for the office assistant. Under this category of income, we have our minimum guaranteed revenue of $330,500. Other sources of estimated income are from our ASB activity sticker sales of $22,000 and miscellaneous income of $9,000, which comes from our athletic gate proceeds and ASIVC portion of coke vending commissions. The total sources of funds is $415,000. Under that total are categories for uses of funds and will be explained on the following pages: Campus Life, Co-Curricular, ASIVC Operations, Contingency, Mid-Year Requests, and Scholarships, which will be further broken down on page seven, and Student Support. These categories will be further explained on the following slides. The total uses of funds, which includes the one-time mid-year requests, is $415,000. For further details on the breakdown of our allocations, I will pass on the presentation to Vice President Smothers.
Thank you, President Batista. As you can see, on page three, we have developed a use-of-funds pie chart that shows the allocations by percentage and total dollar for each program category based upon funding. The percentage is the proportion of total sources of funds that is allocated to that category. The beginning fund balance is included in the overall sources of funds, but it's not included in Page four covers the breakdown of campus life. We have allocated $35,500 to this category. These are the programs that students look for as extracurricular activities on a campus. ASIVC recognizes the need to keep students engaged beyond the classroom. They are also the programs that recognize the accomplishments of all students at IVC when they receive awards and graduate. Some examples of campus life would include the clubs, ASIVC events, commencement ceremony, and scholarship award ceremony. This is what gives IVC students a campus life. Page five is our co-curricular programs. We have allocated $173,362 to this category. We believe that IVC's strong reputation in forensics, men's and women's intercollegiate sports activities, and other successful competitive co-curricular programs are our strongest recruiting tools for IVC. Some examples are on the screen. Page six is our ASIVC operations budget, which we allocated $12,963 to. As you can see, it is our day-to-day expenses of ASIVC, which includes all aspects of student government operation: the bookkeeping cost, duplicating of minutes, agendas, toners for printers, paper, flyers, and posters for events, and the examples as listed on the screen. President Batista?
This chart on page seven shows our contingency/reserve, which is 10% of estimated income. This figure is derived from our total sources of funds, of our minimum guaranteed revenue and estimated income of $361,500, and comes to $36,150. The mid-year requests, which are our beginning fund balance, are our carryover from unused funds and unanticipated income for 2008 to 2009. These funds are not included in the 2009 to 2010 allocations, but they are located in the mid-year requests for one-time consideration from other or existing programs. This figure may change once all expenses and income is calculated by the district accounting department. The last category is our scholarship awards. We currently have $60,000 for 2009 to 2010 scholarships. This meets the needs of students who apply for scholarships. ASIVC has also set aside $20,000 from the 2008 to 2009 budget into the IVC Foundation, and we plan to add $20,000 from this year's funds to meet the next donation of $40,000 for the OSHA Endowment Scholarship. Just for some additional information, I wanted to share that last year, besides our $60,000 for scholarships in 2008 to 2009, we donated $40,000 to the OSHA Endowment Scholarship, which ASIVC has committed to do for three years. On page eight, you will see the allocations for student support. $41,275 has been allocated to these programs. These are all the programs that benefit students that do not fall within the category of competitive programs. The funds are needed to provide support for programs that would not otherwise have funding, and offers more opportunity for students to be successful. Theater is not a co-curricular program, but has some needs for their performances that are not provided by the college. Some examples of these expenditures are listed
President Batista and I know that the Board of Trustees is interested in the high cost of textbooks for our students, and we would like to share some ways that we have been addressing your concerns. This past semester, we purchased $15,000 worth of textbooks to be added to the library's reserve. The textbooks chosen to add to that reserve were the high-demand, most expensive, and the textbooks that faculty have agreed to use for the next few semesters. This means that the textbooks will not be replaced by faculty for at least three years. We also invested $10,000 in a book loan program, and many students who qualified took advantage of this program. This was an actual debit card that the students could use to purchase their textbooks. We still have some of those debit cards left, and they will be available for students in the fall semester. We also have committed $5,000 this year to the library's textbook reserve for 2009 and 2010 academic year. We are in our third year with the ASIVC Book Exchange, and it continues to be very successful. This summer, there are over 400 listings on the site. Other campuses have been in touch with us to duplicate this successful program. Cabrillo College expects to launch their book exchange next year. The Follett Book Store is exploring a book rental program that they want to make available as soon as possible. And the fall semester, all ASIVC elected officers will receive a $300 credit for textbook purchases. At the end of the semester, the textbooks will be returned to ASIVC. This will develop a ASIVC book loan library from which officers can select some textbooks for the next semester. This is an incentive for students to join the student government and get involved with the college. There is also a statewide movement with the governor leading the way to encourage the use of digital textbooks. This is starting with K through 12, as early as this far, and the potential to include community colleges is a high possibility. This concludes our presentation. We will take questions at this time.
Thank you for a very nice presentation, and we will start with Trustee Melchiker.
Yeah, I want to thank you for an excellent presentation, very, very professional. I just have to mention at this time that one of the ways that students are retained at community colleges, because community colleges are commuter institutions, is if the students get involved in a club or activity, such as student government, which you are involved in, and it makes you really be a part of student life and really make a difference at the colleges. And obviously, you're making a difference when you create such a wise budget. I'm also very pleased that you are addressing the problem, which has been addressed in a statewide commission, on the price of textbooks, because the price of textbooks are really affecting our students much more than the cost of classes today, because they've just become so expensive. So it really is nice that you purchase books and put them in the library so students can go to the library if they can't afford them. I just wondered, how you advertise, or how do you run the exchange of textbooks? Do you, is there an online site that students can check on to find out about exchanging textbooks? How is that managed?
On our ASIVC website, we have a specific area that says "book exchange," and what the student does is they go to that, they click it, and then they use their IVC email address and password, and they go to a site where basically it has books that are for sale or that are wanted. And the student can either sell their textbooks on the site or buy textbooks, or trade textbooks also.
Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, a couple of comments. One is, I also want to congratulate you on a fine presentation and a lot of hard work, obviously, that went into the budget presentation. You did a terrific job tonight. I also want to congratulate those involved, Todd, I think others, with the process that brought both of the budgets, as well as the district budget, tonight. I think it's helpful to be able to look at all this information together, be able to compare, you know, the budgets, you know, basically absorb ourselves in the financial matters that concern the district and both colleges all at the same time. I think, I find that particularly helpful. I don't know if the other trustees share that or not. Couple of items. One of the things that I liked about the Saddleback budget item that was here that was not in IVC's was the comparison of requests that was received versus those that you decided to fund. I think I would find that helpful if you were to generate that kind of report in the future, and I would suggest you that it might be something that you take under advisement. Comment regarding books in the library, I think it's a great idea. The concern I would have is those books walking out the door and not being available for students. So I'm hopeful that there are maybe some safeguards in place that that wouldn't happen. I think you might want to consider offering credit counseling courses to go with the debit cards. Another suggestion.
[laughing]
And finally, just a question about the category that you have for the mid-year, what you call anticipated requests, which is really the carryover beginning budget balance. What is the history on that? Have we actually gone back mid-year and allocated some of the carryover beginning balances to special requests that have come along? Is that really quote-unquote anticipated or more potential? Just wonder if anybody has, might have a comment about that.
Well, this is the first time of putting the beginning fund balance in the mid-year requests column due to the new format, so it's a new experience for us to put it there.
Okay. Fair enough. Again, also, I did want to comment that I think the idea of having a template that, you know, has been offered to make the reading of the budget a little bit easier, I think is very, very welcome, and I think, again, my congratulations to those involved in developing that decision.
Trustee Patberg.
Yes, my compliments for a very well-presented budget, and particularly what you're doing with textbooks. With that, I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Let me ask a question. Item's been moved in second, and I don't have any problem with it, but just for clarification, it says here it's the Associated Students Tentative Budget, and it's here for approval. Is, do you come back at some later date for final approval of a budget?
August.
So we're just kind of mirroring the district here with the tentative budget, and so this could be subject to some revision?
Yes.
All right. Very good. All right. Item has been moved in second, and seeing no further comments, we can vote. There we go. Matter carries unanimously. And we are at item 6.2, which is the Saddleback Students Budget. And let me ask President Burnett to get us going on this one.
President, I'm very pleased to introduce Christina Andrews, who's the new ASG treasurer for Saddleback College. He'll be providing the tentative budget update for tonight. A little bit about Christina. Christina is a second year at Saddleback, and she's majoring in philosophy, and she intends to transfer to USC. So we wish her best of luck with that. Also, of course, is our Director of Student Development, Audra DePodova, here also to help with any other questions. So Christina, take it away.
Thank you very much. Give me a second to set this up. Oh, that's ours. Um, Audra? No, I clicked on ours. That's IVC's.
That's J. Saddleback?
Uh-huh, that's IVC's.
Oh.
Does it have it on my email? Is it, has it not changed? Yeah, I'm gonna pull it up on my email because it's not on the desktop. Is that okay?
Well, that's quite all right. We have it in our board packets. I mean, we have it here if you've got it and can go through it for us.
Just give me a second to pull it up.
Okay, you got it.
Nine, ten, ten, ten.
It's on the desktop, but it's IVC's.
Oh, yeah. Look at her. She's gonna go to another place to find it.
Yeah, it's Saddleback, it's Saddleback, it's IVC's.
Get it off, get it off.
I told these people to double-check everything.
Obviously, they listen to you.
The same icon, now both.
Perhaps you ought to double-check yourself rather than just depend on them to do it.
No, I'm gonna double-check it myself.
I think that's what I just said.
I agree with you, that's right.
We know all our emails now.
I saw it, I saw it. Oh, sorry, this. It's the PDX one.
That's mine. Okay. Look at that, a backup plan. It's cooking. Look at that.
All right, sorry about that, guys.
Sorry, as you can see.
Yeah.
I'll show you the slides.
Do that. All right. Good evening, honorable trustees, President Wagner, Chancellor Mather. My name's Christina Andrews, as President Burnett said, and I am Saddleback's ASG treasurer for 2009, 2010. Can you guys hear me okay? You guys good?
So far.
Okay. Before I begin, I'd like to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to present to you this evening. I would also like to extend our deepest gratitude to everyone who helped us make our way through this new process. Thank you to Chancellor Mather, President Burnett, Carol Hilton, Beth Mueller, Lisa Telson, the staff and students of the ASIVC, and of course, you, our Board of Trustees. I will now begin the presentation. It's not in PowerPoint format, so you'll just have to bear with me. This is our process. The budget development for Saddleback began in January of this year. The allocation request forms were made available college-wide, and the ASG Budget Committee, comprised of 10 students representing all three branches of ASG, met to project our revenue. After projecting our revenue, which I will describe to you in more detail on the next slide, we then considered requests for allocations, which totaled 156. We spent a cumulative of approximately 60 hours in the spring semester planning our budget. We were very impressed that we were able to fund almost exactly half of the funding requested, as you can see. And there were five things we closely considered in this process: the number of students to benefit, the educational impact, the enhancement of campus life, the history of ASG funding for the proposal, and the articulated objective for student success. We posted all budget committee agendas, minutes, and related documents to our website as we worked to be as transparent as possible in our process. The final tentative budget was approved by the Budget Committee and ratified by ASG Senate on May 7. Before you, you'll see our statement of financial position, the formatting of which was outlined to us by the district to correlate closely with what you see from the district and to us by the district, to correlate closely with what you see from the district and colleges. The first number you see is our estimated beginning fund balance. Please note that this budget is tentative, and our beginning fund balance is an estimated number. This number includes what you would think of as a sort of rollover, which was $89,679, which is the smallest rollover we've had in the past three years, and that's added to our emergency reserves at $88,100. The next number you see is our minimum guaranteed revenues. Their minimum commissions as per contract that we have with the bookstore, the cafeteria, and vending. That is less our college assessments, which you can see at $188,000, which was comprised of the following: its utilities for the bookstore at $40,000, utilities for the cafeteria at $58,000, and one ASG-funded contracted classified staff position in the Student Development Office that ASG elected to continually support at $90,000. That, and then the next number you'll see, of course, is our minimum guaranteed revenue, which is $573,000, and our ASB activity stamp sales, which we estimated at $120,000. So our total sources of funds came out to $870,779. The uses of funds you see before us, they're split into aggregate categories, and all of these categories will be fully explained further in the presentation. So here you can see our pie chart, which represents our uses of funds. It's basically just a visual representation of the previous slide, and it includes the percentage of the total in the budget. Also, you notice that contingency, emergency reserves, allocation for anticipated mid-year requests, and scholarships and awards are broken down into their own separate categories. So our first aggregate category is campus life, and this includes programs like the International Film Festival, the Inter Club Council Operations, which supports all the clubs, and Multicultural Month. The next aggregate you'll see is co-curricular programs, which includes things like the speech and forensics teams, the California Nursing Students Association, the Lariat and Scholar-Athlete Awards. Our next aggregate is student support. Student support includes things like Veterans Awareness Day, the EOPS Winter Workshop, and the Scholarship Ceremony. And then our final aggregate category, or, yeah, is to ASG Operations, which represents the operating budget that allows ASG to be as self-sustaining as possible. Included in this category are $12,745 for supplies, duplication, and others such essential office support, $8,500 for leadership development and recognition, $52,000 for revenue generating items, such as the ASB Discount Card Program and the movie-themed park tickets that we sell in our office, and $25,000 for part-time project specialist internship positions, which are non-mandatory. So this is the breakdown for contingency allocation for anticipated mid-year requests and scholarships. Each minimum contribution to these categories is derived as the stated percentage of the total projected revenue, as mandated in our ASG Bylaws Financial Code. This total production of revenue is $881,000, and includes all minimum guaranteed revenue plus the ASB projection of revenue. Our scholarship category is broken down into four other categories, which you don't see here, but we have broken down, as competition/leadership awards, scholarships, specifically, the Emergency Book Loan Program, and our contribution to OSHA. And that's it. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Questions or comments from my colleagues on that fine presentation?
Trustee Milchker.
I also want to congratulate you on a very fine presentation, and thank you for offering these wonderful programs, co-curricular activities for our students, which, like Phi Theta Kappa and the Nursing Students Program, and many other programs, which really aid in retention and help the students get to know each other. And I thought it was really fun having the pictures of the students on the presentation, because you could see them working hard and having fun, too, and interacting with each other in such a way as to form friends and relationships, and so they can study together and learn together. And I thought it was a good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, also wanted to congratulate you on a terrific presentation, and a lot of hard work in developing the budget. Good job all around. A couple of comments, though, that I thought I would share with you. One is that it seemed to me, just speaking from a one-person standpoint, that, one, the, and I had had a little conversation with President Burnett about this, but the amount of the college assessments that you're hit with seemed to be quite large, both in terms of dollar amount as well as relative to IVC. I understand that we're sort of changing that process in the future, and that it will appear a little different from a budget standpoint. The amount, also the level of governance costs struck me as being interesting in terms of the differences. IVCs was a pretty modest, and I thought, laudatory, 3% or $13,000, whereas ASG was $98,000 or 11%. Still not terrible in terms of organizational government percentages, if you compared it to other kinds of quote-unquote charities, but still a little bit high, I thought. And I noticed that the contingency reserve calculation was done a little differently between the ASIVC and the ASG budgets, in terms of how you figured it with the beginning balances and so forth. So that was a little, just a little difference, and I'm not sure if that was supposed to be consistent or not. And then finally, it seemed to me that the scholarship, at least percentage-wise, was a little low. I know you've got a mandatory 10%. You barely beat that at 11%. I thought that perhaps could have been a little bit higher, in my view. It was a little bit better at IVC, 14%. So just a couple of comments from the peanut gallery.
Would you like me to address your comments, or?
You're certainly welcome to.
Okay. First of all, in regards to the ASG Operations budget, I know in comparison to IVCs, ours seems a bit steep. However, if you break it down and compare our Operations budget to IVCs, they're contributing mainly to their supplies, and we're very on par with them in terms of supplies. Ours is at $12,745. However, we have a number of other categories that we put into ASG Operations, including leadership development and recognition, and our revenue generation, which is our ASB card. We actually contributed $52,000 to that, so that's actually something that is an investment that we're going to be making money off of. And then the third one would be the part-time project specialist support, which are internship positions through our office. So that's the ASG Operations. The second one was the contingency, how our numbers differ, our calculations differ slightly from IVCs. This is how it's mandated in our Bylaws, our Financial Code. So we pulled our numbers from the $881,000 number, which is our total production. We didn't less college assessments from that, so that's why that number looks a little bit different. And then the-
So your Bylaws are actually different in that regard from-
Yes.
IVCs, oh.
Yes.
Interesting, okay.
Our Bylaws aren't exactly the same by school. We actually-
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And then the next one you mentioned was scholarships. We are, we walk a fine line. We feel that we have to find a balance between how much we donate to scholarship and how much we donate to our actual college programs. We do a lot at Saddleback in, as Trustee Milchker said, co-curricular and campus life programs, and we offer a lot in terms of that, and it really reaches out to more students. We feel like we offer $100,000 in terms of scholarships, and that number matches IVCs, and though the percentages aren't exactly the same, we feel like we've reached a pretty good balance in terms of offering more to the general population versus specific individuals.
Fair enough. Thank you.
No problem.
Trustee Fuentes.
First of all, I'd like to say that I like the picture there on the right. Then I would like to move approval.
Moved in seconded. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I just was going to say, congratulations for a very well-done report. Also, you didn't say anything specific about the textbooks like IVC did. Are you doing anything specifically about making textbooks available?
Actually, we implemented this program very successfully last year. We had, we had $5,000 that we put forward last year, which was matched by our foundation. So we put $10,000 forward last year. I actually sat on that committee last year, and I have been to several state-sponsored functions in regards to textbooks, and have had many successful conversations. We are doing basically the same thing as IVCs. We started ours last year, and we have a rental program in our bookstore. We have a program in our library. To touch on what President Wagner said, we actually have all of our books in the reserve section, so students can come in and check out books for a few hours and get their homework done there, versus taking them out and checking them out. We don't know if we'll ever see them again, as he touched on. We have all of those programs, and we're working on making our program even more versatile, on ideas that I brought back from state functions, so.
Seeing no further comments, the matter's been moved in seconded. Let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Thank you to Ms. Andrews.
Thank you.
Thank you to Ms. Batista and Mr. Smothers for fine presentations. We will take a break while we try to fix the sound levels.
Yours is working, I'm sure. I saw that there was a spill. See, we had it on global for those presentations. It didn't work at all, nothing. This is not good. I want to play that thing. Did you put a disc scanner on this or something? Well, that's just turn it on and turn it off. It's not really reboot. We could have done it for a second, but.
I'm Dawn May. So, I've done it before. I've done it before for more.
Test, test one, test one, test one, test one. Okay. Okay.
And she couldn't be here, and I've offered to be the alternate. Starts with a lot, so you probably should be a piece of. I'm just helping out. Nice to meet you. Thanks.
You're being well-prepared, so I'll be impressed. You had it down cold, I like that. That helps.
I've been grilled by judges.
That was a piece of. Yeah, that's good. Good presentation. You're always prepared. One of the things I like. I like about you, as you are. Totally loaded the wrong. See, I changed the name in order for it to be distinguishable, because it didn't say Saddleback. It just said ASG.
Oh, not.
So, whatever idea I drove the wrong one over, I'm so sorry.
Oh, it's not.
It's just been that kind of name.
No, I know.
Just to make it worse for you guys, I really apologize.
Positive?
Every time I say that, every time I say that, it's good.
Like the opposite way.
Yeah, the opposite way.
Well, both of us are terrible.
No, these guys were. I think you can do it. I think that's. Everything is.
I can email.
Hello.
No, they were all working. No, they're, most of them were here.
We're taped it at least. Someone goes like this, okay, you're not. At the very end it wasn't. That's all.
If we can come back to order. Yours is on. If we can come back to order.
I never do that, obviously.
Oh, you have the best jobs in the world. Uh, yeah, I don't know if ranks.
Do you guys have business cards yet?
All right, if we can come to order now, I think we have the computer gremlins solved. I've cleaned up all the water I've spilled. We're going to reboot the evening and hope for the best. We are at the consent calendar. Let me ask, let me ask my colleagues, any items to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'm going to remove 5.2. And that, I guess, will be the only one. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
It's already moved and seconded.
Okay, fine. Let's vote.
Yes.
Matter carries unanimously. Item 5.2, I've removed, and I have a couple of questions. This deals with parking bail increases to offset new state surcharges. I understand that there is a new state surcharge. I have two problems with this item. I understand there is a new state surcharge of $4.50, and administration is asking that we increase $5 instead of the $4.50. And I'm curious, from the chancellor, why we are increasing above and beyond what the state surcharge is.
That was the recommendation from President Burnett. I would like to call upon him to.
Well, hang on a second. I'll, I'll talk to Todd Burnett in a moment, but it's the chancellor's recommendation. So, I'm wondering what is your basis for approving this? Are you just passing on the president's recommendation? Or did you have your own independent reasons for asking that we keep an additional 50 cents from our students? Or take, excuse me, an additional 50 cents from our students?
I'm supporting president's recommendation.
Okay. What, what is the reason for the $5?
Well, there's a couple of reasons first. First reason is, you might recall that a couple of months ago, IVC came forth, and you approved their same increase. So, it's keeping consistent with IVC. And I think honestly, the real reason is it just made it easy to go from a, a straight number to $5, President Wagner. It wasn't to raise money. In fact, if anything, our philosophy at Saddleback College is to not use our ticketing as a revenue source or raise, a way to raise money. It really more was just for convenience.
Let me, let me follow that up, because I also see that we're going to pay, attempt to ticket our students for items that really have nothing to do with the use of our parking lots. No evidence of current registration, no current license plate, and no front license plate. Currently, we don't ticket for those. That doesn't seem to get to the issue of parking or parking availability. It just looks like we're, you know, doing some, some policing function on behalf of the state, and, and I'm, you know, have a problem with that. I'm curious where, why we're doing that.
I think I know the answer, but I don't want to speculate. Jim, could you help us out with that?
Where'd he go?
He's here.
He's right here.
This is Officer Pyle. 5.2.
I believe the chief, Harry Palmer, would, would have all the answers that you're, you're asking for. He, he got called away tonight, so I don't know what the reasoning was for this. I wasn't a part of drawing up your, you know, the requests. So, unfortunately, I can't help you along those lines.
Well, that didn't work out, I apologize. Unfortunately, Chief Palmer left, and, uh, because we didn't know there was any questions. So, we apologize for that. I can certainly get you that answer specifically. And like I said, I don't want to speculate, because I've done that before and got in trouble, so.
Trustee Williams.
They're citing under the vehicle code sections because they're supposed to. They're trained peace officers, and they're enforcing the law. The vehicle code applies on public streets and highways and on public lands like we're on here. So, they're going to enforce the handicap zones, expired registration, anything they deem. I'm, I'm sure they don't write a lot of those things, but they will if they have to. And that's enforcing the vehicle code.
Thank you, Trustee Williams. That's exactly what I was, I was going to speculate and say, and that was my understanding.
I've written a few.
Doing it just to enforce what they're already supposed to be doing. That's what I would have, would have answered to ask.
Well, they're not already supposed to be doing this. This is a new addition that you're asking us. I mean, you're asking us to perform a police function here, and these are violations that are administrative, and they have nothing to do with easing the parking burden our students face. It's just, it's just a revenue enhancer. I mean, you know, Big Brother is everywhere, but I don't know that we need to necessarily help. If they want to get it, you know, if they want to park somewhere on a public street and get a ticket, that's, that's their choice. But I don't know why our officers would be diverted from their duties to, to worry whether somebody has a front license plate or not.
Well, actually, our officers do do several things. And correct me if I'm wrong, Officer Pyle, I think you can help me out there, other than just doing parking citations. So, I think it's consistent with what things that they're already doing now. These are just additional things that I guess they want to add now, so.
Additional things that would divert them from the other things that they're doing, because they're adding additional things. I, I just, I philosophically have a problem with that.
I think I still have the floor, too. I'm going to comment. That's part of a peace officer's day's work. You enforce the vehicle code. You might enforce the penal code. You might enforce the health and safety code and bust a drug dealer. I don't know. It's all in a day's work, okay?
Trustee Lang.
Yes, I'm just trying to understand, I guess, the, the process a little bit more. We collect, the, the, do these fees get collected by us and remitted to the state? Is that how that works? Or does the, does it go directly from the students to the state when they get a citation from us? Or somewhere else?
Well, the, the citation is written, and when it's, when it's paid, it goes through a company that we have. And those fees are extracted. The fee, the fees for the company are extracted from the tickets. And the, that money is from the tickets are brought back to the college and used for grounds, basically, used for parking issues, such as refinishing the parking lots, striping the parking lots, lighting, curbing, painting the curbs, that type of thing.
So, what, what goes to the state?
The state basically bills us for a, we, we get a billing from the state for processing of, well, I mean, not processing, excuse me, but the use of the courts. That is, that is billed to every police department, the use of the courts, whether or not they use them or not. That's for, and that billing has gone up quite a bit over the last couple of years. And, and that billing is to, for new courts, for upkeep of their courts, that type of thing.
We, I think what you meant, Trustee Lang, is we do collect citations, and then we remit it to the state on this 450 surcharge, an additional. I think this is just an increase, that's what.
Okay. But we also retain part of that.
Yes.
I mean, basically, we use this outside agency to help collect these fees. Part of that comes to us to support our operations. Part of that goes to the state as mandated fees.
Exactly. Yes.
That's how it works.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Williams.
Well, I just wanted to clarify. As far as I remember, parking citations are processed through the contract agency that distributes the money, all the penalty assessments and things like that. The other violations, I'm an Ucrack Assistant Chief Pyle. Those citations for your vehicle code moving violations, running stop signs, if you did a DUI, anything other than that, a misdemeanor or petty theft, you would take those to the South Justice Center, correct? On, on Crone Valley Parkway?
And those.
Or Harbor Justice.
And those fees would go to the state.
Yes, and you got to understand, there's two types of tickets. A parking ticket that's handled by the contract agency, and the other citations that are your more vehicle code moving violation misdemeanors. And those things go to the courthouse, not to the contract parking. So, there's two ways, two kinds of tickets. So, and I just want to say that we need to enforce the vehicle code. DMV fees are very important right now. There's a lot of people that aren't paying them with the economy, but, you know, we all pay ours. I think it's, everybody pay.
One, one further follow-up. What is our, does anybody know what our share of the revenue that we're talking about here is?
For the college?
Yes.
I don't know the share percent. I know it's minor, I'll be honest. And also, just so note, we do not use any of the funds to supplant or to hire additional officers or anything else. The money is staying more with supplies, things like that. So, just note the money. There's no internal conflict for officers or benefit for them to charge more or ticket more to raise revenue for their own operations.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't happen.
Thank you.
I, I still have my mic on.
All right, Trustee Williams.
Yeah, I don't want to beat this to death, but the last time this parking issue came up, my recollection was a lot of the, any monies generated, we put back into the maintenance of the parking lot.
Right.
Is what I remember. So, there's no profit or anything. It's just turned over to maintain striping and slurry ceiling parking lots, correct?
Exactly. Just wanted to note, there is no benefit to officers to ticket more, to get more revenues for their own accounts.
But the district does keep an additional, some portion of what they write tickets for.
College does, yes.
College does, all right. And why have we gone, at least the last 10 years that I've been on this board, without worrying about current registration or front license plates or current license plates? If, if, you know, we're, you know, supposed to be out there enforcing the law and.
That is a very good question. Unfortunately, I cannot answer that, and Officer Pyle was not able to either. So, I can get you that information, because that is a good question.
Trustee Fuentes.
I'm wondering, are the rules any different at IVC?
Actually, it's the same. I believe, though, I was looking for our chief. I don't see him here tonight. But I, I think the month that we brought this was a couple of months ago, maybe three. I think we're only charging the amount that is the increase that we saw from the state, not above that.
I don't remember it going above, but I do stand to be corrected if I'm wrong on that, but I remember.
I think it was the 450, if I recall.
Now, the charges on these others, that's, those are, we can't legally write a site without a charge. I mean, the, the board has to put a price on, on moving viol, or not moving violations, but parking or such things as the, as the license plates. We can't just write in a, a cost. So, we see quite a bit, these are violations that we run into all the time, and, and we can't really write a violation for those without the board agreeing to a cost to those violations, so to have them printed.
And my problem with it is you've got maybe a single mother with a couple of kids who's trying to make ends meet, and she shows up here on campus. And for whatever reason, her ticket, her, her tags are expired. And we've got one of our officers, Johnny, on the spot, finding this and saying, oh, here I go, writing a ticket, when normally he wouldn't. And that student might have a valid permit and might be in a space and not in a handicap zone, and otherwise is just here trying to attend class. You know, if there's a violation of the parking regulations, I understand. But if it's, if it's just some administrative thing like that, that's why I have a problem with it.
We do have a system. If, you know, if somebody wants to contest the ticket, then we do have a, a system for doing that. They can come in and, and fill that out.
You're, you're missing the point. It's not an, it's not a ticket that would be contestable. It would be a legitimate ticket out on the street. I just think it's above and beyond the call of duty for our officers to be writing that for our students, given what we know are some of the economic circumstances of our students. That's all. It's just a philosophical thing. Trustee Padberg.
Well, I was just going to say what the officer said. There is a way to appeal a ticket here internally. And I always advise students or people, even staff, who come and complain, to do just that. And I, I think that we aren't unreasonable. I think we're trying to comply with a bill that was enacted, and I'm going to move the item.
Second.
Trustee Jay.
Yeah, that caught me when I was reading the current reg, the license plate and the front license plate. I, I'd like to divide the question and deal with the other items, but exclude those last three.
All right. There's a motion to divide the question. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of dividing the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the question will be divided. All right, further discussion. Let's vote on the first part of the item, which is raising the fees $5. Trustee Fuentes, please. And that matter carries with one no vote. Matter's been divided. Let's now vote on the last three items on Exhibit A. The violations for no current, no evidence of current registration, no current license plate, and no front license plate.
Move approval.
Move, seconded, all right. And let's go ahead and vote on that item. And that one. That one carries, it's a student advisory, no. So, that one carries.
You guys are.
We are at item 6.4, the tentative budget. And let me start, I suppose, with Deputy Chancellor Porter, who's presented us another nice budget. Don't worry, we'll get all those parking tickets. My mic is on. Oh, no. Last time I turned it off, I spilled all over the electronics, so I'm going to let it go.
Okay, before I begin, so I don't forget, I'd like to second the, the sentiment that was made by Trustee Jay in the very beginning about the budget. And that's to congratulate the people who do all the heavy work on this budget. And one is Beth Muller, right here, the District Director of Fiscal Services. Devi Kachatrian, the College Director of Fiscal Services at IVC. And Carol Hilton behind there. And all of them. Carol is also the College Director of Fiscal Services at Saddleback. And these are the people that do the work that's behind these documents. And they have meetings for months and months and months and work with committees, and they do an outstanding job. And we all owe them a debt of gratitude. I don't need to tell you that the state is in fiscal crisis. The, the state budget has not been adopted. Although, if you, I believe the report's in the paper, it looks like the legislature is close to some kind of agreement. And so, what we're presenting. And so what we're presenting you tonight is just the best information that we, we have right now. There are two areas that are still fairly fuzzy about what is, what's going to eventually happen. One is a reduction to base funding in SB 361. They have some mechanisms such as reducing all districts funded FTEs by 3%. It's going to be partially offset by some of the additional revenues that'll show up in here in a minute. So we don't have a way to calculate or know exactly how that's going to turn out. The other part is categorical programs, and they're, I think we're fortunate, if you followed what the proposed reductions were several weeks ago, it was up in the neighborhood of 58 to 62 or 63% reductions. Now they're much less, much more manageable, but, but still, the effects are going to be felt. The college presidents and their staff have already begun, and they're working on contingency plans, on what they'll have to do to adjust to whatever the legislature finally does in its final budget. So they're prepared to do everything that's needed, to present a balanced budget to you for the final budget in August. The total of, oh, I did want to mention that many more details are available to you in this budget book that you have. Anyone that doesn't have one, that would like to have one, we have plenty that we can get to you. It's a good document, explains everything pretty concisely that I think you'd need to know about the finances of the district. That being said, well, this is just a summary of some of the highlights. The total of all funds in, in the budget before you is $413 million. The general fund portion of that is $216 million. Of that 216 unrestricted portion is 198, leaving 18 million restricted. All the other funds total at 196,000, and there's an asterisk there that shows you that that includes community education, community development, capital outlay, debt service, self-insurance, and retiree benefits funds. Some of the proposals that are in the conference committee right now in Sacramento are some revenue additions, 130 million from stimulus money, and 80 million from student fee increase from the current $20 to $26 per unit. The revenue applications, 140 of that goes to reduce categorical program cuts, 70 million to reduce the general apportionment cuts, and that's pretty much the extent of the information when I told you that they were reducing base funding. This is about all we can tell you right now. But if, if we just took 3% of the budget, you know, that's probably in the neighborhood of $4 million. So that's just, you know, in the ballpark of what we might be talking about. The, also in the conference committee, they rejected the proposal to change funding for physical education and recreation classes from credit to non-credit. So that hasn't occurred as yet in the budget where it is right now. But a couple of things are pretty certain. There is no growth funding that's in the state budget, and there also is no COLA. The last bullet there is about the reduction to base funding. Here's what the best that we can estimate right now about categorical programs. There would be statewide, $193 million reduction in categorical programs. For us, well, there was a proposal for financial aid administration, foster care education, but that's now no cut. There's a 15% cut in CalWorks, it's $33,000, and the, the list of, that follows are 16% reductions, basic skills, disabled student services, programs and services, you can see that's $358,000. EOPS is 252,000, care, 21,000. Nursing, this is just an estimate, maybe 44,000. I think I missed one there. Telecommunications and technology, reduction of 13,000. Okay, the following have 32% cuts. Economic development, 65. Equal employment opportunities, 7,500. Transfer education, 2,500. Matriculation, credit and non-credit both is in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars. Part-time faculty compensation, reduction of 321,000, and a minor amount in part-time faculty health insurance. I don't think we even get any, do we? Do we guess that? Then there, in some areas, there were 100% cuts, instructional equipment, 256,000, scheduled maintenance, 255,000. Total amount of categorical reductions is around 2.2 million, out of a total that we received last year of about 9 million. So, of a base of about 9 million, reductions of about 2.2 million. But again, the colleges are working on this right now, this is the information they have, and they're working on whatever reductions needed to be made accordingly. As you probably noticed on one of the slides, some of those programs have flexibility, meaning you don't have to put the money to those programs, you can put them to something else. I think all that means is the legislature didn't want to make the decision and get the heat, so they're letting you do that. Some of the assumptions, there, there is additional money going into college budgets this year, as a result of growth that occurred last year, and it, it comes in two forms. One is ongoing, so it's 6.8 million, ongoing revenue is added to the college revenues, and there's a one-time payment of another 6.8 million. Now, what that's about is we grew this past year by 6.56%, and that's why the additional revenue, because of the additional FTEs. Now, you can look at, if the state reduces the base apportionments by 3%, and we grew by 6.56, that really cuts back the ongoing revenue to 3.56%. The, the one-time money is because when the, when the allocations are made to the colleges each year, they're made based on the knowledge that we have when we adopt the final budget. And when there's growth, they don't, the colleges don't get that growth money in that year, they didn't get it last year. But we do run our budget model just like a college district would, would be that is not basic aid. And what happens for those districts is that if they grow, the money is adjusted in the next year. So that's what this is, it's, so the colleges are being treated the same way they would be treated if they were in a district that was not basic aid. Okay, COLA and growth you can see is, is zero. And the ending balance from last year, we're projecting right now to be 20 million. There's a 7.5% reserve per the, the board budget guidelines. We have estimated 8% increase in health and welfare benefits, we think it's going to be less. That was the estimate that we made when we put this budget together a couple of weeks ago. The numbers are coming in now, and I believe they're much lower, so by the final budget, we'll, we'll adjust that. We expect very little increase in property liability, we don't have that number yet, but we think that it'd either be zero or close to zero. Salute increases included, faculty and CSEA 1%, all other employees, no increase. And then basic aid receipts. You can see, this is, I always find this interesting, to see the rapid growth of the amount of basic aid. Starting in 1999 to 2000, it was 5.6 million. By 2006, we were up to 52 million, and then the economies, two things happened, the economy changed, and, and so the, the increase in property tax collections was at a lower rate. And in addition to that, we talked about this once before, and that's as, as the colleges grow, and there's more money from, that goes into funding 361, then there's less money left in basic aid. So you can see that dropping to 47 million the current year, excuse me, that's just an estimate, and we're looking at maybe next year being down to 37 million. That's because of the increase of the money that's going to the colleges, we talked about earlier, the 13 million. And you've heard from Chris Street before, and he's projecting a decrease of 7% in property tax collections in the future, so we're reflecting that in our estimates. And, let's see, here's some basic aid funds that are included. 2.5 million for retiree benefit expenses, 2.4 million for the operations of ATEP, and you recall, we don't, we don't levy the colleges for funding to operate ATEP, we're using basic aid money for that. 2 million for negotiations, 1 million for development of ATEP, and so the work that's being done, planning and legal, et cetera, at ATEP is all being funded out of basic aid. We set aside some money for advocacy for basic aid issues, that's always at the forefront of the thought in Sacramento, of finding a way to get into basic aid districts' funding. And the last item is 29.7 million funding for future capital projects that you haven't allocated as yet. That's it.
Move approval.
Second.
Trustee Williams.
I'm, I'm going to support the budget as it's presented, the only thing, and Gary, let me thank you for a great budget presentation. The only thing I'm concerned about is the categorical funding cuts, and if it's the will of this board, I'd like to see something, when we have the final budget adoption, the option for the board to augment the, the categorical funds, maybe not to 100% of the level we're at now, but maybe just stay 70, 80%, because that's the area of, with the students with the most needs, the disabled students, the, as Trustee President Wagner mentioned before, the single moms coming back to school, the, I just hate to see us cut so much in those areas. And if we could, with the support of the board, ask that you bring back an item to, if the board chooses, so adopt it, that would augment those programs directly, so. But this is only a tentative budget, and I will vote to support the budget, tentative budget as presented. Thank you.
And, nice job, Gary, and to your entire budget team, we have a number of trustees looking to speak, and then the chancellor, Trustee Milchikar.
Yeah, very nice budget. What are the final percentage of the categorical cuts? I, I know they started out at 58%, but what are they right now? I know some are 15% now, but what are the percentages?
It's, it varies by the, the program. So, like, there's 15% cut in CalWorks, 16% in basic skills, DSP and S, EOPS, care and nursing.
Oh, I see, under the, under that area is 16%, and under that area is 32%. I didn't understand the chart. I see. I'm certainly delighted it's really been reduced from the 58%, which was just unacceptable, because these are really important programs for our students. And I, I agree with Trustee Williams about the categorical programs, I think they're very important and we need to look into it. I know, I know that this is, is the district budget, this isn't the college budget, but I, I agree with, with his assessment right now, and I also think that we shouldn't overreact until the final budget is, is presented and is, is in, so we, we really have to go slowly and, and, you know, I know we're, we're getting, expecting some cuts, but, but until we see the final budget, let's, let's not overreact to it. So, I also have a question, why, why would they, I know this is probably asking why they would do something in Sacramento, it's a very curious question, but why would they fund the PE classes at the non-credit rate? I mean, there certainly are classes that the students are getting credit for, so what, what is the reasoning they're, they're giving to us for, for doing that?
Well, under those proposals, they, students wouldn't get credit for it, it would be non-credit, and would be paid non-credit.
Oh, the, the PE classes would be non-credit?
Yes.
Well, that would certainly be a, a liability to some of our students who, who are, might be PE majors, or, or kinesiology majors, or, or, or taking some of those classes. I mean, when I, when I went to college, I, I took badminton, and tennis, and archery, I remember, and got credit for all three of them. And it was, it was required to, to take three PE classes to graduate, so you'd have a well-rounded education. I, I really think that these are classes, and they should be given credit, but I know that's not your decision, obviously.
Well, right now, it's not in the, the conference committee, it isn't being proposed right now. It was earlier, it was being discussed, but it doesn't look like it's going to happen.
Okay, good. And then, I'm just curious, why would nursing be considered a categorical program?
There's some special funding for nursing that we participate in, and it's, it's going to be cut back.
Okay, thank you.
Now, you made a statement, this is the district budget, not the colleges. It's the district budget, but it includes the colleges and district services and ATEP, and all the other funds. So the categorical cuts you're talking about are categorical cuts that affect colleges, and it only affects colleges because that's where the programs are.
I see, I know that our, our budget model, and I agree also, that, that our budget is much more transparent in the last few years than it's ever been before, and I compliment my staff on that, so you could really see where every dollar is, and there's, hopefully there's nothing hidden, I don't think there, I'm pretty sure there's nothing hidden in here, that it's all, it's all open and, and all available for everyone to see and to comment on. And I know that, that because the student, because the colleges have grown, because it's an entrepreneurial budget, that the colleges are receiving the increased dollars for the growth that they have experienced at each college, so that's a good thing. So I'm hoping that they could use that growth funding for, you know, for, for practical things that they need at the colleges as well.
Okay, there was a comment made by Trustee Williams just a minute ago about augmenting the categorical programs, and that, of course, is a departure of the way that we've funded in the past. We've only, we've only funded to the level that the State Budget Act funds, and so we would need direction about that. I know that Trustee Williams feels that way, it would be helpful if we had some indication of the whole board of what you wanted for the work that we're going to do on the final budget.
That one overwhelmed.
Well, I, I would like that area to be looked into, because I, I really feel that we should, you should, we should look at, personally, I feel we should look into that area, because, I mean, some of these programs, like matriculation and, and, you know, some of these programs are just so important for our students to be successful at the community colleges, that it's important for us to make sure our students are successful. So I, I would personally hate to see some of these programs be, be cut back so badly. Now, I, 32% isn't as bad as 58%. Now, I, 32 percent isn't as bad as 58 percent, but, so that's why I think we should look into it, and, and wait to see the final budget from the state, because perhaps they'll be cut even less, hopefully.
There's another consideration, and that's, that the state isn't now saying this is a one-year cut, they're saying it's a cut. So, if we begin funding it with basic aid this year, what if it's still cut three years from now, do we still fund it from basic aid, and what about five years from now? So, it ought to be a deliberate decision.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be a deliberate decision, but I feel that basic aid should not be, as the board has always said, should not be going for ongoing expenses, should just be for one-time expenses, so if the college needs help for one year, or one or two years, I, I think, and if we have the money, I think we should, we should help them in, in, in the areas that they really need it. But we do have to look at the long-term picture as well, so, but I, I, are you saying that this is a, from now on, there'll be a 32 percent cut in, in these particular areas? This is a permanent cut, or, or is, could it possibly just be a one- or two-year reduction because of the fiscal situation in the state?
I would say I don't know. They have, they haven't said what it is, but they didn't say it's one time.
Okay.
Well, here comes the numbers guy, trustee Lang.
Well, fortunately, I had a chance to talk at length with deputy chancellor Portner earlier today, so I got many of my questions answered at that time. Again, congratulations to you and your team for a fine job on the presentation of the budget. There is one item, I think, that you and I had discussed, that I would like to perhaps see added to the guiding principles section of this budget that's on pages three and four, and it would be a separate item that address, that addresses growth funding, and the suggested language might be that the district through DRAK not fund any growth above state published, above the state-published growth rate for our district, and only if the state provides us with growth money to fund it. So I would, I'd like to see that perhaps incorporated. I am concerned about, well, before, I guess I would entertain a vote in favor of backfilling in categorical funding, I'd like to understand what the colleges' plans would be absent that type of funding, and that might help inform my decision in terms of whether that ought to be done on a one-time basis, or, or if it is an endemic situation, as, as you've suggested it possibly could be, I think that would be certainly a slippery road to, to head down, and I think we'd need to be very cautious about that. Couple other items that I wanted to just, one I wanted to ask about, and that was, because I don't think we had the new information that you had about projected basic aid receipts at the time that you had developed this other information for us, and I'm assuming that these are kind of the latest estimates that we have in this area. You've indicated that the drop in basic aid for 2009, 2010 is fully attributable to the decline in SB 361 revenue, but I guess I'm wondering, wouldn't part of any decline also result from further downward assessments in, in property taxes as well? And have we, is that part of that estimate that you've included there? I'll, I'll let you answer that one, then I have a couple other.
Okay, I think I didn't explain it well, based on what you just said. It's down for two main reasons, one, property tax collections are more level right now, if not down, and so we don't have a, maybe a 10 to 12 to 13 percent increase in property tax collections in a year, which is what we were having in the years that basic aid was increasing at such a rapid rate. Secondly, basic, the amount of money that we're taking from our property tax collections and putting it to 361 calculation is more when, when we educate more students. So when our, our FTES went up in the 08, 09 year by 6.5, 6 percent in funding, that raises the amount of money that comes from property taxes, leaves less for basic aid.
Oh, okay, so it's the combination of those
Yes, yes.
Those two phenomena that are generating this figure that you've estimated for 09 and 10.
Right, yes. Now, before we also go further, you asked about categorical programs, I know the presidents are working on answering that question, they may have some comments they could make right now.
John?
Well, as you see, there are, just to remind you of the two categories that are here, the first set are those that have no flexibility, just so you understand fully what that means, is that the cuts that are indicated for those, you don't have room to move dollars around among those, and so if it says 41,000 for basic skills, that's what you have. So with those, we're taking a look at, with those kinds of cuts, what will actually happen to the program, and that's a stage that we're in right now. Before we would take any moves with this, it, it requires a broader discussion, and being summer, it's, it's tough to get particularly faculty together to do that, but we're not quite ready until we figure out exactly what that impact is going to be, but we're looking at each and every one of these, and it may be possible, the early, early read on DSPNS and EOPS is that there's likely room in there to accommodate the cuts as indicated, without drastically hurting those programs. That's the initial feedback, without going into a lot of detail.
Okay.
Now, where it gets tricky, and Gary was exactly right, is they gave us the pain, instead of doing it there with the legislature, is that those that allow flexibility puts us in a very interesting place in terms of discussion, because in there, we do have the ability, with your approval, to move any of those cuts, even away from some of those with flexibility to others, and to mix and match throughout. So right now, the one that's caught our attention the most is the matriculation, it's the highest here, we're looking very seriously at that, it tends to be a very employee-heavy area, a program, so we're very concerned about cutting too deeply into that before we start affecting people, which of course is going to affect the services to the students. So, we're really in a, kind of an analysis stage, DeVit's heavily involved in looking at actual dollars, and what kinds of impacts there might be in those. And then we'll be looking at, along with the broader college, the options that we have to move through here. So that's the stage we are right now, but we're fully prepared to do what we need to do to, to meet this.
I concur, at Saddleback, we're doing basically the same thing. I would note that we're taking this as an opportunity for management right now to look at the entire campus, and we are doing what I call efficiency reviews, and looking at all elements, we're not, we're, we're taking the perspective that it's not just categoricals that we should be focusing on, we should be looking at the entire campus, and take it as an opportunity, at very least, to find the better ways that we can increase our efficiencies. And once again, that's, yes, money and funding, and can we continue to provide the services with, with less money, just as well, but more importantly, it's how can we increase our services that we provide to our students as well, and maybe bring in other sources of revenue. So we are working on that right now, and then we plan to be going with our college process and presenting management's findings, which they've been working on for a month now. In fact, we meet Wednesday to go over the final list, which are, they've done a wonderful job. We put it through our participatory governance process, and bring it to our consultation council as early as next week, to start going through our college process, which will influence, of course, our final budget. One thing I should note is that the actual cuts to most of the programs are actually 16 percent, it's not even the 32. The only 32 percent cut is, as, as Glenn said, is to the matriculation, which really is the area for us, for most concern as well. So we're operating on right now, at least on the categorical, of looking at the 16 percent cuts, which is, as Glenn also noted, is something that at least can be absorbed by our programs and by the college. And we're very thankful, hopefully it stays this way, that it doesn't go back to anything above 16 percent, certainly not the 15, 58 percent that was done before. So hopefully that helps a little bit.
So I think what I'm hearing from both college presidents is that in order to address trustees Williams and Milchekar's concerns, and answer, give direction to deputy chancellor Portner, we really need to have that information from both of you, and have a larger discussion about this before we make any precipitous, precipitous decisions on our own, without that information. So just a couple other items, and then I'll, I'll be done, I think. One other item that we talked about is, as you recall, we moved a sizable amount of funds into the retiree medical dental and Medicare separate trust. Those funds are administered and managed separately, by, by a separate group outside of our district, they're not subject to the same investment policy, if you will, as our own funds, and so they had, there has been a decline in the market relative to the amount that's in that trust at this point, is indicated in the budget, there'll be an actuarial study that's done in 2010 that determines additional contributions that may need to be made to that fund. At the moment, there would, there is a shortfall between fully funding and where we're at that now, I don't think there's anything in the current budget that would make additional contributions to that fund now, correct me if I'm wrong about that, there is to the retirement fund, but I'm not sure about this one.
You're right.
Okay, so that is an additional potential obligation that we have, assuming the market doesn't come back to where it was before, you know, that we may have some, some additional funding there as well. So I, I think that's another thing to consider in all of this, and, you know, be interested to, you know, obviously, when that report comes back to us eventually, on that. So I think that is probably all of the remarks that I wanted to make, and I know that we're getting close to the hour, so I'll make a motion to extend the meeting for up to an additional half hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, matters carries unanimously, thank you for that, trustee Jay.
Yes, two things.
Microphone, please.
The chart that's been in front of our, oh, the chart that's been in front of the, the trustees here for the last few minutes, and the same with the audience on the ones up there, is the 32 percent cuts, but with the allowance for flexibility. I did notice that the governor's latest proposal was 58.8 cuts in categorical programs, that's on page two of your
Right.
Yeah, isn't, which is the case right now?
Okay, 58 percent was the case when this book went to print.
Okay, okay.
And since then, the conference committee has other recommendations that are going through the process, so what you see here on the slides is what is currently being considered.
Okay, okay, so the 32 percent is currently being considered, so
Yes, 32 and 16 also.
I know it doesn't answer your question, John or Marcia, but I, I too am concerned about the categorical, the, it says allows flexibility, so we could make up some of those cuts in the categorical ourselves from district funds, is that correct?
We could always do that, but that's not what they mean by flexibility.
What do they mean?
What they mean is you could take a bunch of money out of one of these programs and put it to another.
Oh, put it into another, okay, okay. Second thing, I, I really think that we need to look at, where we had 50 million of liability for retiree benefits back several months ago, and we chose to put it into a fund, we covered the entire liability at that point. Of course, the market hasn't done very well, but our fixed income funds have done pretty well. I think we ought to look again, I'd mentioned this before to you, but I think we ought to look again at putting the 41 million that's left into some fixed income stuff, no matter how low it is, 1 and 1/2, or, or 2 percent, or whatever it's possible to get right now, because the market doesn't look good, it started down again, and, and we may be testing the lows that we had a few months ago again, and I'm very, very concerned about that, as I'm sure any, any retiree is. Lastly, in the, the final budget here, ah, no, thank you, I'm done, you've already answered it, thank you.
Trustee Williams.
Well, my intent was to support these categorical programs, was not the use of basic aid for ongoing programs, it was a one-year-at-a-time infusion of money to supplement the hit we're taking, so I guess that would be my proposal, we're probably not gonna get 100 percent, the presidents are telling us they have flexibility come up, if you would, is their board's support to get something we could vote on to allocate money from basic aid on a one-time basis, maybe look at this as a two, one, two, three-year program, where if eventually these things are all gonna be cut down to 50 percent or 60 percent of where they are now, we just don't do it in a year, we, we take like a two-to-three-year period to do this, and make it up with basic aid one-time basis each year until we slowly arrive, it's rather a cushioned drop, if you will, rather than the Sacramento slice-and-burn that we see going on up there. That's all, just one-time allocation each year to supplement these programs, so the colleges can adjust, rather than just, you know, knock their knees right out from under them. That's kind of what I had in mind. I don't have a number, I guess I would defer to the presidents and, and the deputy chancellor to come up with, what would the number be to have an easing of this, rather than the slicing, so.
Trustee Milchekar.
I, I also agree with trustee Williams, I, I would agree to one-time, one-time allocation to the colleges to, to, to help them ease into it, but certainly not, not anything that would be ongoing, but we have to wait to see what the final cuts are, so I agree with him on that. Also, I'm wondering, the cuts that are 16 percent and have no flexibility, for instance, EOPS, which is for disadvantaged, or culturally disadvantaged, or economically disadvantaged students, and DSPNS, which is for disabled students, these are state-mandated programs, and so are they, is the state mandating these programs but not funding them, so it will have to come out of our own budgets? Is that, is that what's happening?
Yes, they are mandated programs, and some of them are, right?
Well, EOPS and DSPNS are state-mandated programs, for sure.
Portions of it is, trustee.
Yeah.
Portions of it is. Also know that they have talked about in their proposal suspending some of those mandates as well, during this period.
And is, is matriculation a statewide mandate also? Do you know?
Yes, it is, but that's one that they're talking about suspending
Okay.
The obligation.
Okay, thank you.
Just a bad one.
Well, I'm certainly in support of trying to help our disadvantaged students, and if those are the ones that are getting cut, but I think it's premature, I think we need to wait and see how the budget, state budget actually flushes out, and at that point, when we get the final budget, then would be the appropriate time to do some backfilling, if we need to.
Chancellor Mathers, some of?
Thank you. Let me make a few points that perhaps have not been made yet. In light of the budget situation, first of all, we are not planning to offer any new sections, we'll try to maintain to the same level of sections that we have offered in the past, and increase productivity by filling seats in the existing sections, so to speak. I've asked the presidents to significantly reduce, possibly eliminate, marketing efforts, because we already have a lot of students knocking on our doors, and there's a limit to as to how many sections we can offer. Earlier, there was a question asked as to how many students are coming from within our district, and how many students are coming from outside of our district for online education classes, that's true for our off-campus offerings as well. I've shared some information with the board through my update, that the basic aid continues to be under threat from Sacramento, not to mention that basic aid is declining locally due to property taxes being reassessed and so forth, and there's a projection from county treasurer, Chris Street, at this, at a, at a board meeting here, of a potential reduction to the, you know, about 7 percent for 2010 and 11, if I remember correctly. So we need So, we need to keep these things in mind. When the budgets are tight, I'm glad to see that at the college level, we are seeing prioritization of funding for various programs, categorical, as well as general fund areas. We're looking at efficiencies, as President Burnett mentioned, and President Rockmore has talked about that. In these times, it is important to assess, evaluate the effectiveness and the productivity and the efficiency in these programs. For example, per board suggestion, we are moving towards online schedule of classes on both college campuses so that we curtail the cost of printing those schedules. So, these are the kinds of things that we are looking at. Now, more specifically, with respect to the item that has been discussed here in terms of providing any possible augmentation for categorical programs, let me caution the board that we need to handle this issue very, very carefully. Let me give you a couple of some reasons here. First of all, according to the previously board-adopted principles or guidelines, we are not supposed to put money, basic aid dollars, in the ongoing expenses area unless the board wishes to modify those principles. Here's what may happen that we need to consider. If we restore our categorical programs to the same level that we have been accustomed to based on the state allocation formulas, and other districts have to cut, within Orange County specifically, if we maintain the same level of programs by infusion of money from basic aid, whereas other colleges in Orange County are cutting, what do you think is going to happen? Those students are likely to enroll in these services on a first-come, first-served basis. It'll be very difficult to stop them, just like when we offer, in the past, additional sections, when we have offered them, they come and enroll in our classes on a first-come, first-served basis. The demand may be even higher than what we have been used to in terms of serving these student populations. Then, are we going to go into the basic aid part again and try to get additional dollars to even expand the program in the name of meeting these student needs? This is when the basic aid dollars are already under threats and declining basic aid dollars, and therefore, we may have to consider taking money away, basic aid money, from some other projects that may require some basic aid dollars for some good reasons. So, these are the kinds of things that we would need to consider. It was already suggested that we do not, we consider not funding credit courses and the like above the state growth level. Well, let's apply the same thinking. Do we want to fund categorical programs above the state-funded growth level? So, I think we need to work with the presidents, let them do what they need to do to look at the needs, prioritize, manage the budget within the allocated dollars, and then we can assess the situation and come back and make some prudent decisions that do not bring some negative long-term ramifications. Thank you.
Trustee Jay.
Yes, one other thing. You pointed out there was 2.68 million revenue increases for a total of 13.6. But basic aid has gone down 10 million from 47 to 37. Does that mean that our revenue, additional revenue available is only 3.6 million, counting basic aid in the total equation? Oh, I'm just wondering, you know, you're looking... What do you mean?
I don't, I just don't understand, that's all. I'm following you.
Two things, which were 2.8 million.
Yeah, right. There was, right, there was 13 million additional dollars going in. Right. That's right. Right.
And also, basic aid is down 10 million.
Right.
So, are total increase in revenue, basic aid included, be only up 3.6 million?
Well, basic aid, the number of basic aid, the amount that we have is the answer to a calculation. And the calculation is, what is our total entitlement through SB 361? We don't get state money, we only get property taxes. So, you compare the entitlement to the property taxes. The remainder is basic aid. Basic aid isn't some number certain. Basic aid is what is left.
Right.
Okay? So, there's a lot of factors that are going into it. As 361 goes up, as the entitlement goes up because of enrollment growth, then the amount of money that's available from what we call basic aid is less. Also, as property tax collections level off or decrease, that also reduces the amount of property taxes that eventually, you know, may become basic aid, depending on the calculation. Right?
Okay. But the 3.6 million dollar figure then is not a good one? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm not familiar with what that number is. I mean, I don't, we don't calculate it that way. Any of you understand?
It doesn't sound to me as if we're really up 13.6 million.
You mean as far as funding?
Quite drastic increase, the increase of basic aid.
Well, the amount of funding going to the colleges will be up 13 million dollars.
All right, seeing no further...
College questions?
Trustees willing or wishing to speak, let's vote on the tentative budget. And tentative budget passes unanimously. Thank you again, Gary and your entire staff. 15 minutes left. We have to move to 9:25. Wow, okay. And you'll notice I did not call them your minions. Someone else is calling them minions. No, thank you. All right. Item 6.5 is here for approval. It is our five-year construction plan.
Move approval.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, let's vote. And matter carries unanimously. Item 6.6, district mission, envision, and goals, here for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, let's vote. Trustee Melchiker, please. Thank you. 6.7, basic aid funding. Is this not a college item moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Trustee Lang.
I think the only point that I wanted to make about this is that 6.7 and 6.8 are items that are basically saying, we're going to go ahead with these projects on our own nickel with the hope that the state may come through in the future with some money for us. Now, frankly, I think, based on the condition that the state is in at this point, the chances of that may be slim and none. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't go through with these. That's not the point that I'm making. I just don't think we ought to hold out an unreasonable expectation that the tooth fairy is going to come through for us here, based on what I'm seeing.
There is no requirement that the state fund these dollars later. They may. In conversations with the chancellor's office, they would say, someday when there's money, we would hope to, but they will not make a commitment that they will.
All right. Yeah. Matters here for approval, I think it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. 6.8.
Move approval.
And same...
Can I say one thing?
Certainly.
Both of these projects are in process. So, I'm sorry, so we're kind of left holding the bag here. We've got, otherwise, we have projects that aren't completed. So, I'm supporting it. I don't think we're ever going to see the money from the state, so...
And let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.9.
Move approval.
It's here for discussion, and the motion is to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Let's vote on the item. Oh, sir. This is for appro, was the motion was for approval?
Approve it.
The motion was for approval, which is why I specifically said that. So, if you don't want to approve it, if you want it to come back, vote no. And the matter carries unanimously. 610 is a classified employee layoff notice, here for approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion of this item. Trustee Melchiker.
I just know that this position is being terminated because we've lost, the grant is no longer viable, and we don't need the position anymore. But I just want to make sure we are very cautious with all of our layoffs, and we don't do layoffs without being really studying the issue. And I will approve of this one, but I want to bring that issue up, that we really study every layoff and make sure that we need it. So, do you have a comment on this particular one?
Now, this one is needed due to the elimination of grant funding. I agree with you that we ought to be very, very careful in dealing with layoff situations. And considering the economy, I mean, we are extremely cautious in layoffs compared to the layoffs taking place out there in the public as well as in the private sector.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, I will vote approval on this with that caveat. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's vote on the item.
Is this a resolution, Mr. President?
It is a resolution.
Don't we sign it?
We've already, we've all signed this. All right. Item 611 is academic personnel action items. I understand there is a correction.
Mr. President, item A1B pertaining to David Gatewood that should read Range 2, Step 2, not Step 1.
All right.
Wait, is this academic?
Move approval with that change in notice.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Trustee Melchiker.
I just wanted to comment that on this particular agenda item, we are hiring 18 new positions. And I looked through all the positions, and we have some, indeed, some really top people that we're hiring, PhDs from really top universities, and it's a really impressive list. So, I'm very proud of all our hiring committees that have done all these selections. Also, two longtime faculty members are retiring and that have been around for many years, and I just want to bring that to everyone's attention, too. They'll be missed, and we're moving on with the new generation of faculty. So, thank you.
All right. And trustee Lang.
Just point of clarification. I don't think there are that many new positions. I think some of these are replacement positions.
Yeah, some of these are replacement positions, but they're 18 new hires. They're not all new positions. So, two faculty retired. As we all saw at graduation, there are a huge number of faculty that have retired this year, and I don't know why. I think it's a wonderful place, but whatever. So, they're moving on. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Trustee Fuentes.
Trustee Padberg's comments have added to confusion. How many are these new positions now that we're talking about, and how many...
I think maybe...
Excuse me, did I say, what did, a very, excuse me, I correct myself. Trustee Melchiker's just-made comments have confused. Could I know now how many of these are new positions and how many of them are filling positions that already exist?
Chancellor Mather.
Trustee Fuentes, I'll be happy to provide that information through the update, if I may. I don't have that in front of me, but I do have that data of the last two years. In fact, I had recently asked for that information from HR, and I have the information in terms of the number of retirees in the last two years, the number of full-time faculty members that we are hiring, and so forth. I would rather give you the exact numbers through the update, if I may. But let me add...
It would appear to be 13. It says here, either it's a new position or it's a replacement.
Can you, what page is that on?
Well, it's in each description, there's an underlying section. Either, look at the first one, this is a replacement position. You go down to 2A, this is a new position, and I believe it's 13 new positions, and then a few replacement positions.
I see that now. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that is the answer. Right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, great. Further discussion? Questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And matter carries unanimously. 612, is there any update or change? All right.
There's one correction. It's nothing but a date going from June 8th to June 4th on item E4 located, buried on page 18. And my apologies for that, but we want to change the data that the position would be effective from May 12th to June 4th instead of June 8th. That's on item E4 located on page 18 of 20.
Move with that correction.
Second.
Further discussion? All right, let's vote on the item.
Thank you.
Matter carries unanimously. All right. 7.1 is a report on information technology. I think this was a report requested by trustee Williams. Questions or comments? Sir?
Well, thank you for the report. It's just amazing what we're doing, kind of tied in with the distance education presentation earlier on how we service the technology side of providing that distance education. The MAP program, there was discussion of the award recognition, and also the futures assembly recognition and presentation. I see Jim Gaston is here tonight. So, we're doing a great job, and I think we probably, our overall IT services here in this district are as good or better than many of the universities in the area, frankly. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's just a report, so no action, right? No action. Item 7.2 is an information item. This is a report I requested, and so, let me take the laboring war here and thank the presidents and the vice presidents, some of whom are here, and Vice Chancellor Bremuci for a very thorough report. Lot to consider here, and I appreciate the information. Any additional discussion? All right. 7.3, our basic aid report. 7.4, just up, up, up too fast. Oh, you did push your button. My mistake. Trustee Lang.
Yeah, it seems like the estimates in here now need to be updated in light of the new information that you've provided to us tonight. So, I'll look for that in future information reports. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 7.4 is an information item, discussion. Seeing none. 7.5, the list of board reports. 7.6, our monthly status report, financial status report. And we are at item 8, which is the reports, and you folks have 10 minutes. Make them count. Let's start with President Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President, once again. Real quick, just to let you know a bit on summer session, we're up 17 percent in full-time equivalents, which shows the demand out there for all of our students in the community. Also, happy to report that the Orange County Workforce Investment Board Summer Youth Employment Program, we have hired 71 students this summer, serving in 16 areas of the campus. So, I'm very proud of our campus to be able to hire and help our summer youth that need these jobs this summer, and a wonderful program with the web. Obviously, I had mentioned earlier, I want to welcome our three new administrators and managers, and thank you very much to the board for approving, ratifying their hiring. I'd also want to take this opportunity on the, to thank Tammy Rice, who is our interim dean of human and health services, and thank for the wonderful work she did, as well as our assistant dean, interim assistant dean, which was Diane Pace Delacy. Just so you know, Tammy Rice will be moving back to her previous position, which was assistant dean, and then, of course, Diane will move back to being a full-time faculty where she was before, too, as well. I mentioned one thing, I went late, that the last, this last week, in fact, tomorrow, I will be approving a recommendation from our previously named or called Planning and Budget Committee, our council, is now going to be called Consultation Council, which is one of the changes contained in a new strategic planning process that our campus has been working on pretty much for the last six months. We will have that for you at the update. I believe it's in the July meeting for strategic planning, but I would like to take this opportunity to thank our wonderful governance groups for working so hardly on that, and in particular to Claire Cesario Silva. You met her earlier on online education. She also wears another hat, and she has been taking lead on our revising our strategic planning system and process. So, thank you to her. And now, with the new director of planning, research, and grants coming on board... And now with the new director of planning, researching grants coming on board, a lot of work has been done to start off on the new phase of us for strategic planning, which you'll hear more about. I already mentioned to you earlier about the wonderful efficiency reviews that our management is undertaking and our college will be looking at, and you'll hear more about that in the future. Finally, I just want to say this, over the last couple of weeks, I'm sorry, on June 5th, our foundation board of governors had a retreat, all-day retreat, trustee Padberg was there, thank you very much. Would like to mention and announce some new members to our board, which I think you'll be very pleased to hear. First, the Reverend Mark Whitlock, who's the pastor of the Christ of Our Redeemer Church of Orange County, joined the board. Jim Leach from Cox Communications, he's a common name, you've probably heard before. Joyce Van Shaack, she's with the Christopher Columbus Fellowship Foundation. And finally, of course, our wonderful new ASG president down there, Delaney Taylor, who is on the board. That's my report.
Thank you. President Rockmore.
In light of the hour, I'll be short, just to say it's a very, very busy summer, we are up 20% in FTES, it's definitely impactful on the campus, we're handling it fine. And then the summer is being made quite a bit busier with the budget situation, we're working very, very hard on it, and we're going to come through that just fine.
Thank you. Thank you. Provost Peebles.
Thank you, and I'll be brief also, but I did want to comment tonight on the really great progress on potential ATEP partners. Over the last four or five weeks, me and other staff, the chancellor and presidents and others, have made visitations to UCI School of Engineering, we've made visits to Cal State Long Beach, talked to the president there, Concordia University, the chancellor, and CSU Fullerton. At each of those presentations were overviews of the concept plan 3A, we showed drawings and activities, and really I think got some, a real high level of excitement at each of those meetings because significant progress in the timeline was demonstrated to them that was really positive. So there was a connection, I think, that's not been seen in some years as we've moved forward, as we move forward, I think, more aggressively now. I think a number of those even have culminated in new letters of support going to Chancellor Mather indicating an interest to continue discussions for potential partnerships. That's a very good thing. On enrollments, some enrollments pretty much stabilize at ATEP now, essentially doubling our enrollment from 2008, so efficiencies in enrollment, and also, I would say because of an increase in activities and partnerships with both of the college presidents and the faculties there, which is certainly appreciated. And lastly, which I'm sure you know of, but I wanted to comment, a community presentation about ATEP is being prepared for our August board meeting, will be in the afternoon, and invitations will be sent to the community at large, including local businesses, community and civic leaders, legislators, government officials, K-12 and college administrators. So we're looking forward to that presentation in a couple of months.
Thank you. President Gabriel.
Thank you, I just want to mention that we're still hard at work in our accreditation report, and we have our first meeting this summer on Friday, and things are going really, really well, the campuses come together and there's a lot of work being done over the summer. Also, I want to thank Denise Cense Young at the district, the district director of research, she's working with both colleges really nicely on the institutional effectiveness report, which you'll be seeing in the fall, and it's very important for our strategic planning that we have that data, and so I want to say thank you to Denise.
President Dominguez.
Actually, I'm not, I'm.
Vice President Wagner.
I'm actually Bob Cosgrove for the evening, so, different hair. I'd like to thank the board of trustees for approving the basic aid reallocation to the library, that will help us move along in fixing major problems and lots of infrastructure problems at Saddleback College, and the library is the major resource for our students, so thank you very much for doing that. I'd also like to thank you for approving the ASG budget, and I think we really, the faculty would, I know, want to commend the ASG for being so proactive in getting the budget forward to the board of trustees in the middle of summer because the programs that rely upon this funding can now plan without any hesitation and any sort of delay. So thank you so much, and thank you for, thank you so much, ASG, for getting that done. That's, huh, that was wonderful. And by the way, you know, part of putting the ASG budget together is the students work so hard, and I don't know if any of you know, they actually do what we would call a dry run with our consultation council, and they were able to be so articulate weeks ago, so thank you so much for helping them have that experience, that's helpful. And finally, I know, there's a bit to say, I'd also like to say, and I've never had the opportunity to do this, and I don't know that Bob Cosgrove has, but I'd like to thank our new president for being so engaged and so motivating. He's come in and been rather a breath of fresh air at Saddleback College, and it's been a lot of fun to work with him and develop new projects, so thank you very much.
Different hair, I understand where you're coming from, yeah. President Hagerty.
Thank you, President Wagner, board members. First, I'd like just to report on the fact that I am next week completing my first summer session, six-week classes, students are very engaged and it's a lot of fun, that is my primary job description, and you may imagine. Also, I'd just like to report that I was elected as a delegate to the National Education Association Convention, that'll be in San Diego next week, along with some 9,000 other teachers will be there, and was referred to as one of the most democratic processes in the world, where we'll be establishing educational policies for the entire nation through the National Education Association next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And let's move over here, President Batista.
Well, ASIVC, last May, we had our commencement for 2009, and we've currently just been working on the budget, and I thank you again for the honor of presenting it to you today, and we just work, we just hope to closely work with Saddleback throughout the summer and throughout the fall.
President Taylor.
I will keep my report short as well, I just wanted to thank you for approving our tentative budget, I know Christina, along with others, have been working very hard on it, and we look forward to seeing you again in August. Also, we're just trucking through the summer, and we're looking forward to working as well very closely with IVC through the summer and the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. President Williams.
Well, classified staff at Saddleback are wrapping up one year and about to begin the next, and with that, I will be turning over the helm of the senate to Russ Hamilton. It will probably end my tenure in shared governance for a while, I've sat here with you on Monday night, once a month, for the 10 of the last 12 years. Together, we've gotten through four contracts, three classification studies, four accreditation reports, several master plans, and more meetings than I would ever want to try to count. Most years, we represent about 450 classified employees. A lot of people think that classified employees have jobs, rather than faculty and administrators who have careers, but luckily in the state, we're moving towards the term classified professionals and classified staff really are. To give you some idea of that, the senior member of our staff is Linda Summers with 38 years of service. There are 14 more, you guys never get to come to any place where we receive our pins, the faculty get them at in-service, so I'm not sure that you're really aware of the fact that there are 14 who have 30 or more years of service, 19 with 25 to 30, 45 with 20 or more, and 62 with 15 or more. So 140 of the staff are in their 15th year or more. They all take a lot of pride in their work and get a lot of pride from a job well done, and part of that's because you've made it a great place for us to work because we've been able to work collaboratively together to just improve life for everybody. So I'm really kind of surprised to miss it, it hasn't always been easy, but I think I might actually miss you guys once or twice a year on a Monday night.
You'll be back, don't, you'll be back, and.
You know.
And those are great statistics, thank you for sharing that. President Morehouse.
Well, actually, Mary said everything that I was going to say. No, I do want to, I don't really have a report, I do want to say that we are going to miss Mary a lot, she still will be around until November, December, and I do have her cell phone, so I will be calling her a lot, so that's all, thanks.
Thank you. And our new face at the table, Dawn Mayne, welcome.
Hi, I'm just substituting in this evening, and we have no report except to thank Mary for all the years that she's represented us so well and so eloquently.
Very good, well, thank you, Mary, and we stand adjourned in memory of Charles Mathias. Thank you all.